The 2020 reorganization meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call roll. Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemundo?
Here.
Mr. Pointon?
Here.
Mr. Reardon?
Here.
And with that, we... Mr. Capuzzi, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegion?
Pledge of Allegion to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so reorganize the board. Would... The first item is to nominate a candidate for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Angela Capuzzi.
And I will call the roll. Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Shannon? Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemundo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll accept nominations for the position of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Reardon as vice chairman.
Is there a second to that nomination?
I second that.
Any other nomination? Okay, nominations are closed. Kelly, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemundo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept the nominations for the position of secretary for the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Chairman Jesse Point.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any other nominations? Any other candidates? Okay, I'll close the nominations. Kelly, could you take roll again, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemundo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we point Marge Buchanan as our scribe for the year 2020.
Second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Welcome, Marge. Too late to back out now. Okay. I will make a motion to set the calendar for our meetings for the year 2020. Basically, it's the second and fourth Thursday of each month, with the exception of July, August, November, and December. In July, we'll meet on the fourth Thursday. In August, November, and December, we'll meet on the second Thursday. And I also, at the urging of the township commissioners, ask that our meetings convene at 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. That conducts our reorganization business. Before we get started with the other agenda items, I'd like to welcome Maggie Dobbs to the Planning Commission. Maggie comes to us from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. There's going to be at least one person up here who knows what they're doing. And also, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank the two members who retired from the Planning Commission last year. Mr. Joe Russo, who served on the Planning Commission for many years, he served as chairman for many years, and Mr. Paul D'Amilio, who also served for many years and as vice chairman. I'd like to thank them for their efforts and their contributions and their dedication. And I think between the two of them, they had probably over 30 years of experience on the Planning Commission. So, thank you, gentlemen. We'll miss you, and good luck. Okay. Now, we're moving on to the discussion with the Environmental Protection Agency regarding proposed modifications to a treatment plan on Eagle Road. And we have a spokesman from EPA.
You do?
Come forward. Give us your name, rank, and serial number.
My name is Joshua Barber. I am the EPA remedial project manager for the Haver Town PCP Superfund site.
Welcome, Josh.
Thank you very much. And I brought with me Liz Piazza, who is with the EPA contracting company Tetra Tech. They are the designer for the treatment plant expansion.
Okay, is Tetra Tech have a Philadelphia office?
Yes, but they're out of the Delaware office.
Delaware, okay.
She's out of the Delaware office. She is.
Okay.
All right. So, what you should all have in front of you, a series of maps that deal with what we're going to lay out here. And this is meant to be very preliminary. This is something that we've been working on for the past few months. And if you don't mind, I was going to give you some background, not a painful history of the Superfund site, but kind of what's going on there, why we're here, and kind of all the... There's a lot of different stuff going on there. Is that all right? Sure. Okay. I don't want to take up anybody else's time in the audience that might be up here later. Sorry. So, I'll go quick. So, Haver Town site has been around for quite a while. I think most people are aware of it. So, the source of the contamination was the National Wood Treader, National Wood Preservers facility. That is, that was essentially under where Mr. Storage is now. Probably, some of you are probably very familiar, and you're, used to be there, or know it, or see it, or what have you. So, the cleanup for the Haver Town site has been ongoing for the better part of three decades plus. The last... What's happening at the Haver Town site is the National Wood Preservers facility has been capped. And that was a long time ago, done in the early 90s by EPA. And subsequently, most recently in the past few years, I'm sure you're all aware of Mr. Storage and everything that's been done over there in that area. So, it sits on a portion of the cap. And there's a lot of other activity with the area behind Mr. Storage, surrounding other parts of the cap. In addition to the cap itself, there is a groundwater capture and treatment system. So, the treatment plant sits in the brick building at North 900 Eagle Road. That's right adjacent to just north of the Mr. Storage facility. And I, you know, so if you all... Well, you couldn't see it because it's behind you anyway. But if you'll get this first map here, the main drag here is Eagle Road, and then Lawrence coming in. And pardon the blobs that are on top of everything, but you can see that orange dark polygon that's on this side. And that represents the extent of the synthetic liner that caps the facility. And then there's several feet of soil, depending on where you are, that sits on top of the cap. And then the treatment plant is just to the north of that. You can see that clearly labeled. And there are several groundwater extraction wells that are along Eagle Road. Next to, between YMCA and Eagle Road, you can see something labeled RW-7, and then there's an RW-5. The RW-5 is near Tony Roney's, and the RW-7 is between the YMCA and Eagle Road. And we also have a groundwater collection trench that is east of the YMCA, behind several houses on Rittenhouse Circle. And there is, that comprises the majority of our groundwater capture and treatment system. So, all the groundwater is either collected in the trench, or in one of our recovery wells that's centered the treatment plant. It's fully treated, and then it's discharged into Nailers Run, consistent with the discharge limit set by the DEP. Some of that water is reinjected beneath the cap to help flush out other contamination. And it's been operating in that... Oh, I'm sorry. And there's also, it's off of this map, but down at the far end of Rittenhouse Circle, behind 301 and 305 Rittenhouse, there's a small recreational open space area owned by the township that was a secondary source area created by contamination moving from the National Wood Preservers site through an abandoned sewer line that was unbeknownst to everybody. And then it was upwelling into that ROS area. That was, that and some of our most recent recovery wells are what was the last component of the cleanup that was completed in 2010. So, all of that work has been done by EPA and the DEP. This is a fund lead site. It's Superfund lead. There's no responsible parties that are implementing the work. And in 2013, the lead agency roles switched between EPA and the DEP. Under Superfund, when there are, after, when you have a 10, when you have a long-term remedy, a long-term cleanup, after 10 years, the management of the cleanup switches between EPA over to the state. And then essentially, we become their oversight agency, as opposed to how they are, they're, we're all partners, but they're our oversight agency, right? So, right now, everything's being operated by the DEP, under operation and maintenance phase. And stop me at any time if you have questions.
Does EPA pay DEP to manage?
We do not, no. So, there is a, there is a, the way Superfund works is during construction, there's a 90%, 10% cost share between the construction and implementation of the remedy. And then after that 10 years, DEP takes over, or any state takes over, and they're responsible for the full maintenance costs, operation and maintenance costs.
Can you show on the picture where the Rittenhouse Circle is?
So, well, so written, the area I was talking about, if you go to the next page, the third page, maybe? Let's see if the map is correct. The man with the map, yeah. So, if you look on this map here, this is, you can see Rittenhouse Circle is the street that hooks up behind the YMCA, okay? And far down here, down Rittenhouse Circle, you can see this ROS area that's...
What's an ROS?
Recreation, it's township property, Recreation Open Space Area. It's a, it's not, I don't know that it was ever used for anything, and it currently isn't anything other than just grassland next to a couple of intersections of creek that come together with Nailers Run and a few other tributaries. So, that area, for all intents and purposes, that area that's far to the southeast is clean. The soil was excavated, the groundwater, there's three small extraction wells that pump there. They pump about a gallon a minute, but with the exception of one or two contaminants that are barely above our cleanup standards, everything else has been cleaned up. So, this was a pretty quick cleanup overall, compared to the rest of the site, which has been in various phases of remediation since the late 80s, early 90s.
When you say remediation, does that mean the removal stage is...
Clean, yeah. The cleanup would be another way to say it. So, the cleanup of like, of the ROS area was achieved by removal of the contaminated soil. This pipe, this old abandoned sewer line was coming up through an old, either manhole or standpipe, and the contaminated material was just spreading out onto the ground. So, it was surface contamination that had leached into the groundwater, which was why it was so easy to clean up in a relatively short amount of time. Typical groundwater, what we call in this situation, is to pump and treat cleanup, right? You pump the water, you treat it, and then you discharge it. Pump and treats are typically decade- or century-long cleanup. We haven't been doing it long enough to say century-long cleanups yet, but some of them will be. But the, so, the ROS area is pretty close to being completely clean, completely remediated. The rest of the site is in various stages of that. And that is due to the nature of the way the contamination from the site was released into the environment. It was a lot of oils and wood treating chemicals. And as that made its way down in through the overburden that sits on top of the bedrock and into the old bedrock, there's a lot of cracks. And the contamination gets absorbed, not only into the cracks, but into the pore space, into the actual pores of the minerals that are there. And we can pump and pump and pump, but it won't, it won't come out in, it won't come out any faster than it gets soaked in. So, we are working on this constant pumping to not only contain the contaminated groundwater area, but reduce the overall contamination over time, just by, it's just naturally slowly pumping it all out. As the, as the water comes out, it helps to dissolve the contaminants out of the matrix and out of the aquifer for treatment. So, that brings me to, why am I here now? The site has been operating, the site, the remedy is protective in the long term. However, if you all remember, in 2018, we had a lot of rain. We had, you know, 50% to 100% more than the average precipitation event. So, while the federal government was temporarily shut down, in early 2019, I was getting emails from one of the residents on Rittenhouse Circle about a sheen of water in their driveway, and a lot of water coming in through their crawl space. And to make a very interesting and somewhat several-month-long story pretty short, once we came back from being shut down, I worked with my counterparts at the DEP. We collected some initial samples at that property, and we identified site contaminants in the water in their sump in their basement, as well as contamination in the soil in their yard, and contamination in the water that was ponding on their property. Now, to be clear, the groundwater contamination has always extended underneath a part of this property, but it's been several feet below. This, if I go back to this first map, real quick, the larger purple blob that's shown there, that represents the extent of groundwater contamination related to the Haver Town PCP site. That was in 2017. The pink blob represents the extent of the groundwater, the pink blob that's overlaid over that purple blob represents the estimated extent of the groundwater contamination now. So, you can see that it's shrinking, and that's happening over time. But you can see that this plume, it exists underneath a portion of the neighborhood. There are no vapor issues. We've done extensive vapor testing, and nobody's drinking the water. So, there's no exposure when the groundwater beneath an area is contaminated, and it's in a situation like this. What happened in 2000, as a result of 2018 and into last year, was some of that contamination started to come up to the surface of the ground. It was essentially upwelling, and it was seeping or weeping out of the ground surface on one of the residential properties on Rittenhouse Circle. And so, that kicked off an extensive investigation along Rittenhouse Circle. We had very extensive and numerous conversations with residents on Rittenhouse Circle. We've put out many informational flyers and fact sheets and things like that. But we essentially narrowed it down to approximately 10 residential properties where there's some form of soil contamination. And these are all properties that are on the northern side of Rittenhouse Circle. So, basically, between Nailers Run and Rittenhouse. And we have identified certain areas that have soil contamination. There are several properties with residential sumps where we identified site-related contamination, and/or both, essentially. And this is all believed to be the result of this phenomenon with the additional precipitation that brought some of that groundwater contamination to the ground surface. And it was, I mean, it was very extensive. There was people who had sumps that were cycling every 30 to 60 seconds, and they were pumping that out to their backyard. And it would run down either, it would run down into this wet area behind these homes on Rittenhouse, which is where Nailers Run used to be. It was moved over in the 50s to where it's currently located in this area. And it's just a naturally wet area to begin with. But it was, it was much wetter. In this situation, we had, you know, certain clear sheet flow and surface runoff in certain areas, not only being generated by the upwelling of groundwater, but by all the discharge that was occurring by some of these properties. All of them eventually end up either getting, draining into our trench that's there. It's a buried underground trench that goes down to bedrock. Or it ends up in drains that eventually discharge into Nailers Run itself.
Rittenhouse is down gradient from the...
Yes, yes. And I, so, if you, as you're looking at the map, the general movement of groundwater and the movement of contamination is from left to right on that map, west to east. That's the regional flow of groundwater in the area.
Question. If this last spring, once again, in the spring of 2019, we had a fairly wet spring, did you notice any additional problems happening in 2019 to affect this again, or were you able to control it because you didn't have a shutdown and this other stuff?
Well, the shutdown never affected, so the plant always operated while we were shut down. That, just to be clear on that. But to answer your question directly, no, we have not seen... Now, we haven't, we also don't have, we have not yet, well, we've had some big rain events. We have, we are not on track with anything like what we had in 2018. So, throughout part of our investigation, which took from, you know, February through July of 2019 to conduct all the various tests and investigations, we, one of the things we were looking at is what is the... What would, the water table was known to be about five feet higher than typically speaking. We inject groundwater that we treat back under the site, but that's been operating, that's been happening for over a decade, and we never had any issues. So, we evaluate, we checked to see if that, those injections were impacting the water table by basically turning them on and off and measuring the water table. We didn't see any real effect. What we do see is that the aquifer still seems to be more saturated than it had been previously. And so, these rain events do seem to precipitate a, kind of a short-lived, but a noticeable response in the water table movement. We haven't seen any upwelling, and we have direct contact with all the residents on Rittenhouse who've been impacted. Then we ask them to, with every rain event that's going to be significant, we remind them to let us know if we, if they see any seeping into their crawl space, any, any kind of changes in their, if their sump is operating more often, if their, if their yards are more saturated. So, we have not seen anything replicated like late 2018 and into 2019. But we're monitoring all of that as we're doing all this other work.
Because in the last few, in the last few years, we've had more floods that would qualify for 100-year floods than, and it's been repetitive and repetitive and repetitive.
Yes.
So, that means that basically somehow or other, you all are, I guess, are adjusting the way you're looking at things in the future, because it's going to have some kind of an impact going forward, not just on this project, but on other projects that are in the region where we're getting the extra.
I would imagine so, yeah. I, I mean, I have, this is one of my two main, I have a other large cleanup act, cleanup site in southwest Philly, and Fullcroft, and those areas. And so, we're looking at the same things there, as we're in the midst of construction of the cleanup approach. But yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, we, so what we're doing, so it kind of, what really brings us here tonight is the activities that we're implementing to address this new situation. And Superfund is broken down into two parts. There's the remedial side, which is the bigger long-term cleanups, and then there's the removal side, which is more of the short-term, either emergency or not an emergency, but not a super-long-term cleanup. So, from the remedial side, I reached out to our removal program. We're all in the same office. We're all in Superfund, brought them in to help me conduct assessments on the site and in these different homes. And once we realized that there was this situation where there was contamination known to be present in residential areas, we were able to develop this, an action plan. It's called an action memorandum, which authorized EPA funds to clean up this, to address this issue. And to do that, so I'm working with the removal program now, together, we're basically out there every day, to do three things. One is to waterproof every residential property that has had any water issues on the inside, where we've been able to test for contamination, or where we know there's wetness that occurs. Then that includes, we have done it, we're preparing to do this later this month and in the next month, but conducting waterproofing activities on the residential structures themselves, expanding the groundwater collection trench that's basically behind the YMCA and these yards on Rittenhouse. We're going to expand that trench laterally, kind of to the northwest, to capture, to extend into the areas where we saw the upwelling of groundwater. We have numerous, if you look at that third page again, where there's no aerial photo, we have an extensive monitoring well network. Every one of these, with the exception of the green boxes and the trench itself, all of these other black and white hashed circles on here are our monitoring wells. And so, we have an extensive network that helps us show which direction groundwater is moving, vertically and horizontally, as well as what kind of elevation changes we see under different scenarios. So, that allows us to design this extension of the trench that the removal program is going to construct, which should essentially, if, the way I think of it, it's basically casting a wider net around this area so that we can cut off any future scenarios where the water table is rising in this area, and make sure that there's no, any additional discharge of groundwater to the surface. And that is another part that we're doing with the removal program. And then the last component is the ex, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The question about that expansion or extension of that trench, you said in the northwest direction?
It is essentially, if you see on this map this dark red bar?
Yep.
That's the collection trench. And you see those two black lines, those two black circles have four and have five? It's going to head directly in that direction, and the length of the trench is essentially going to double.
And you go down to bedrock with that?
It would, yes. But, yeah, so weathered bedrock, approximately anywhere between 12 to 18 feet deep.
Okay.
It's pretty shallow. And we are working with, I mean, we meet with residents more than they would like at this point. They were wondering why things were, they were kind of, things were a little too quiet for too long while we were trying to wrap our heads around all of this. And now, we're kind of sick of seeing us, I think, with all the frequency of conversation. But, I mean, there's a lot of work that's going on. This impacts residential properties. There's concerns about their health, as well as their property values. So, there's a lot of conversations that we're having to discuss the process, not only for the actual in-home improvements, but all this additional infrastructure that we're going to need is going to require land access and easements and things along those lines and compensation. So, we do that a lot. I do that a lot with my other projects. I work with the Army Corps of Engineers to do all of that, and they're on this case, on this site as well with me. So, the last part of this is, under the removal program, is the excavation of the contaminated soil from the yards that we have delineated thus far in any additional areas that we identify.
And generally, how deep do you go to remove the soil?
It would go to a general, there's no hard and fast rule. It's essentially until we either attain our cleanup levels. So, we have this, we have site-specific cleanup standards for the site, for soil. Either that, or until we would reach the water table, is generally what you would do. Because excavating below the water table, you know, unless it's a source area, it's not readily going to act as something that could be used residentially or recreationally, if you're several feet below the ground surface. But every, every site is different. So, right now, we, we've sampled the top one foot, and we're conducting additional testing before we start excavation, so that we have a better handle on how deep we go. But generally speaking, you would collect confirmation samples of the excavated areas as you get down, as you get down to new floors and sidewalls within the excavation pit. You sample those areas to demonstrate that you've reached a clean area.
And this is for eight or nine properties?
Approximately, yeah. Actually, so there's a total of 10 properties that are impacted. About seven have, there's some overlap. Some have just soil, some have just sump, and some have both. And none of, there's all, no cost to them. This is all bought through federal appropriations, and while DEP is still operating the facility, the treatment plant. Which brings me to, I guess, the most germane reason and topic of discussion for tonight is the treatment plant is already at capacity from a volume perspective. It's, it's been expanded, it's been updated, it's been optimized numerous times. And now, with that combined with the fact that we're going to be collecting more additional water, not only from the residential sumps, but from the groundwater collection trench, and possibly, if we find a need to put in another recovery well anywhere, the plant needs to expand. And there is no more room. It is packed to the gills, is the family safe term that I would use.
What's its capacity right now?
Well, I'm, the current capacity is around 60, it's 65 gallons per minute, roughly, of treatment. But there is some cycling that has to happen. There's some backwashing, so it's slightly less than that. It's around 50 gallons per minute is what's being treated.
Has there been any emissions from the building itself?
No, we don't have any airstrippers or anything like that. There's no emissions. You mean air emissions, correct?
Air or ground?
So, I mean, we, we, all the groundwater that we collect is treated. It's treated down to state discharge limits that are site-specific for this site. And so, that's either discharged into Nailers Run, in an underground discharge point, or it's reinjected into the bedrock to help flush out the additional contamination that's locked into the fractures in the bedrock.
Do you use carbon filters?
Yes, we use, there's a whole, there's a long treatment train out there. We use flocculation, carbon filters. We use acid treatment as well. There's, there's, there's a whole host of contaminants that are present because of this site. You know, we have heavy metals, but we also have organics such as, the main contaminant of concern is pentachlorophenol, PCP. That was the main wood treater chemical that would preserve the wood. You know, if it's like, if you think about the old railroad ties that used to be treated with that arsenic. And we also have some pesticides like dialdrin. And there's several other inorganic, there's other petroleum-based compounds. And there's several other inorganic, there's other petroleum-based compounds, benzene, taliwin, ethylbenzene, xylene, we call them BTEx. So there's a whole litany of contaminants that we collect in the groundwater and all of, all of them that are related to the site or that we could generate as part of our treatment train, we have discharge limits for that are permitted by the state.
Where do the, the filters get disposed?
So there is a, there's a filter press that, press that dries all the sludge into a roll-off and that roll-off is disposed of at a hazardous waste landfill in Ohio, I believe. Yes, I think it's Ohio. Can't remember. Don't quote me on the location of land, but it goes to a hazardous waste landfill.
You're, I assume your existing collector trench has some type of pumping system that pumps the water back to the treatment plant?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Every, yeah, so the trench essentially has two wings and there is a sump in the middle with a pump. And there's another recovery well that I didn't mention, that's, you can see it on the one map. It sits right behind it and it pumps deeper groundwater from the, from the bedrock, pumps that into the trench, and then that trench water pumps up to a force main that comes underneath the YMCA over to the treatment plant.
So if you extend your trench, you're going to have to either put in another pump or upgrade the existing pumping system?
Both. We will do both.
So there's going to be some utility work that has to occur to get your?
Well, we already, so we already have power there. We're going to need to upgrade our service, absolutely, yeah. But we already have, we do have utility service down there currently.
But do you have to put in a new force main?
There's no expectation to put in a new force main, no.
No, okay.
No, because the, the force main that comes out of the trench now is adequately sized to handle a much larger volume. So, yeah, yes. But we will definitely, essentially, what we're, the current conceptual plan, and I need to reiterate, this is conceptual at this point. We're moving very fast. The goal for this design is to be complete. The design, well, I haven't even said, so we have to expand the treatment plant. And the design of that expanded treatment plant, which is why we're here tonight, to give you a kind of an initial look at that, is scheduled to be complete by June of this year. All of this removal work is happening right now, you know, the residential work and the trench work. We're hoping that that's going to be completed, ideally by the end of the summer, all of that work. So, but the, the design work for the treatment plant, we would like to have completed by June of this year. And then, once we have all the contracts in place and the funding secured, we would then begin implementation of the treatment plant expansion. I'm going to wait if you have a question.
So I guess the plan's going bigger, basically?
Yes, it is, that's right. And we're going to need some variances. So that's why I'm going to step back and let somebody who is much more intelligent than I, Liz, can explain a little bit more about what we're thinking and planning to do.
So as Josh said, you know, the plant existing has been running since, I believe it was like 1996 it came online. So even though there have been upgrades and, you know, an addition at one point, I think it was back early 2000, 2008 timeframe?
Yes, that was part of the, as part of our last phase of cleanup in 2008. We expanded the building.
A lot of the material or the equipment is old, needs to be updated, along with the additional capacity, the tanks and the pieces inside the plant can't handle this additional flow. So that's why we need to expand. We have to keep the plant up and running while we expand it. So the space and that configuration and how that's all going to happen is something that we are in the process of designing currently. So the first sheet I have here, well, it's actually the fourth sheet in your packet, is just the existing property. So it shows the existing boundary next to where the Mr. Storage site is and the existing plant as it sits there today. If you flip over to the last sheet, the fifth sheet there, the proposed addition that we're looking at would be to the south of the existing groundwater treatment plant. It is a significant addition because of this added capacity, as well as, like I said, having to keep the plant up and running while we are, you know, remediating all the systems.
What is the size of the existing plant in square footage? I see the new addition, but what's, do you have what it is there, the old one?
I actually don't have that one here with me this evening.
Okay. Looks like it's around 5,000, you think?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that looks like it, too.
But, so we are currently assessing the, what equipment will be going into the plant itself and the configuration. At this point, the addition of the little bit over 3,000 square feet proposed is what we have estimated. We are confirming that. With this and the variances that Josh referenced that we're putting together the calculations for, one of the first ones is a side yard setback. There's a minimum 25-foot side yard setback towards the south, towards the Mr. Storage facility. And that one, we would be looking to reduce down to accommodate the addition. We're also looking at impervious coverage and building site coverage for the site and assessing, you know, the requirements for that versus what we're proposing. So that is the next step in our process. But we wanted to come and give you, you all just an overview of what we were looking at and where to start the discussion and allow for any comments, questions.
Assuming you receive your variances, then at some point in time, you would come back before this board with a land development plan, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there any extra room in this addition? I mean, you're sizing it based upon some additional flow, but is there a little extra in there and just in case you?
So that's actually, that's exactly what we were just discussing and there's a meeting earlier today about the, whether or not the addition that we have shown here currently on this sheet is enough or whether if we're already going out there, we should put a little bit more in. And, but looking at the site configuration and access for the, you know, removal and disposal of the, the waste that's generated and all of those things are pieces that we're still very early in the design process and are working on those items. We just wanted to come and start the conversation with you all.
And just one item I want to point out, since you first built the treatment plant, there's been some changes made to how we would like the Eagle Road corridor to look. And all you have to do is look across the street at the YMCA and, and to your neighbor, the Mr. Storage, to see what they've done as far as the sidewalks and the improvements along Eagle Road. So we're going to be looking from, the planning commission is going to be looking for EPA to mimic those improvements.
What I will say is, is that we will do everything that Superfund allows us to do in that regard. We are restricted in regards to enhancements and improvements that are not specifically necessary to the remedy implementation. Superfund prohibits that. However, there are always a lot of this, there's always room for discussion and interpretation of what is required by local ordinances and how we can comport with that as best as possible.
Okay, and one other question. Once this addition gets built, do you take on any additional maintenance responsibilities or still thrown entirely back to DEP?
We would, we would essentially take this, the ownership of this, we, the management of the facility back until it's deemed operational and functional. And one year after that period is when it's essentially a shakedown period and then it would transition back over to the DEP. Throughout this whole period, Tetra Tech has been operating the facility for EPA and then when DEP took over, Tetra Tech continued to operate. So there's been like a, there has been a consistency there. There's staff that work on the site that have been there since the plant started, but there would be a kind of resumption of roles currently once everything's all shucking down.
And speaking of the plant operator, there is no additional plant operation needs from a staffing standpoint that's anticipated for this. This is simply a capacity issue that, that's why the plant needs to expand.
Is your operator licensed by the state? Does he need any type of special license to operate a treatment plant?
So he, I know he has different certifications, has WAPA certification and those type things. I am not 100% sure as to the state certifications.
We're, I mean, under Superfund, we are, for any applicable or relevant and appropriate regulations that pertain to whatever we're doing, the administrative requirements don't, aren't required, but anything that's substantive is something that we need to be consistent with under Superfund, yeah.
We appreciate, and I want to add what EPA has done since the beginning of this time. We, this has been a major undertaking and has been very important for our township and especially for the nearby residents. The, the, the small improvements for that approximately, less than 100 feet that are down there at the end would be a safety issue as far as I am concerned, as opposed to anything else, because of the amount of volume of people that now use that area since the YMCA is in place. And I would like you all, strongly encourage you to, to look at, it's not a matter of beautification as much as it's a matter of widening and, and having some consistency so that as we move forward in developing the rest of the corridor, we're not going to create some kind of a problem where we're going to have a congestion where we don't need it, especially since we have a traffic light at that corner now that didn't use to be there.
Absolutely, yeah. From a safety standpoint, we would want to achieve the same.
Thank you, because that's what I'm looking for. And I know that everybody on this board feels the same way.
Absolutely.
I have a question about your, the proposed location of the building expansion. I'm looking at the Google Street Maps and it looks like there's a shallow detention basin with stormwater outfall. Is that connected to the Mr. Storage site? And what is the impact then of the building addition on this, what looks like a functional stormwater detention, retention basin here?
Yes, so there actually is. And we met with the township engineer and had this same overview discussion. There is a shallow detention basin there. It is not an infiltration basin. It's actually located within the limit of the cap, so we don't want to infiltrate any water there. With that being said, what we're actually currently, what I'm working on designing and assessing is putting in a underground detention system in that area. It would allow me to expand into the current, the current building addition expansion goes to the toe of the slope of that detention basin there. We, Mr. Storage, the, the current built-out portion does not discharge into that basin. They have an outfall close to the end near Eagle Road, but it doesn't discharge directly into there. I believe part of the addition may, but I have the information on that that was sent over by the township and we're incorporating that into our design as well. We're looking to put that as underground detention, so covered in grass, vegetative, you know, slopes, so it would not be seen. But that would allow us to expand and adjust that detention around the building addition so that we could have both. Good question.
I did also have another question. So the expansion you're talking about for the addition or the extension of your collection trench and just overall capacity, is that in part to, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, to accommodate the increasing rainfall events we're experiencing? And so my question really is, with the expansion of your collection trench and operational capacity at the plant, how does that impact then the groundwater levels in the surrounding area and will you be uptaking more groundwater in the, in the area? I guess the question is, is there a concern that you're taking too much groundwater from the surrounding area and lowering the, the water table at all?
So the, the trench, the precipitation doesn't pertain, doesn't affect the, the volume that we would be extracting, generally speaking, that's not why we need the expansion. The trench is passively fed and it's, so, so it's, it's equilibrated to the water table anyway. And there's, the, the current sump that sits in the center of the trench is, is based on a water elevation within the sump, so as it gets too high, it's pumped down. So we, we wouldn't, it would not be a, like an active production well type scenario. It's more, it should not be influencing the water table largely. You might see like a small influence just as water goes into the trench on one side, but it's not an active, always pumping, trying to suck as much water out. It's more of a, a barrier to, it's the most path of least resistance. And so it's a passive, the water passively enters in and then the water that ends up in the sump would be pumped out to the force main. So it shouldn't affect any of that.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in and giving us an update on this. We look forward to seeing your land development plans.
We'll see you again.
And we look forward to our improvement along Eagle Road.
Our safety measures will definitely be, be in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Cal, do we have minutes to review?
I apologize, I did mean to get those over to you earlier, prior to the meeting, but it did slip my mind, so they will be, we will look at them next meeting.
Next time, okay. Sounds like a plan. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you and happy New Year.